All right, we are recording. Mr. Young, if you want to start off?
Absolutely. Well, thanks, everybody for joining today. The purpose of the meeting is for us to basically introduce our one-to-one initiative that we are hoping to get off the ground this year and to have as a fully functional program, really for the 2022, 2023 school, sorry, I'm two years ahead, 21, 22 school year. But with the move to remote learning, not just in our district, but in many districts across Ohio, at one point or another, the use of technology and the ability to provide access to every child in our district will help us address not just engagement gaps, but also equity gaps that we have. As you know, one-to-one programming has not necessarily been in effect prior to the school year. However, because of the proactiveness of the Technology Committee, Dr. Kalaris, before me, Dave Wallace, and some of the technology initiatives, we find ourselves with 850 healthy devices right now already in our possession and plans in the future already in place to replace those. So while we don't have a one-to-one program officially prior to this time, we have been fully set up and have been proactive enough through the Chrome Cart and through some of the other classroom applications to be ready to deliver this to our students and to our families and our teachers right here, right now, as we prepare to go remote. So Dave has done a lot of work on what a formal program could look like. He's looked up fee structures, he looked up device capabilities, he knows the shelf life of all of our current devices. He can communicate what the replacement process would be, what the process would look like in final forms in order to determine whether parents will not just have the ability to opt into our one-to-one program, but they may choose to use their own device. We find that many of our students have devices that are that are more capable even than our own devices, and they may choose to use those. But the goal would be this, it's not just to address the remote learning piece. The use of technology as a tool has been in our teaching standards since 2005. Our students will go on to colleges, universities, career technical schools, and to businesses that are going to use computer capabilities. We know that. I had an electrician come over to my house two months ago. He brought a computer with him. This is something our students need to have more, more access, more involvement, more practice with. So even when we come back in person, we plan to continue to utilize these resources in the classroom. So it's not just a remote learning tool, it's going to be a tool that can be used well beyond that. So I'm going to stop talking and I will let Dave take over. Or if one of the board members typically starts talking at this point, I don't want to take the time away from you either.
All right, thanks, Matt, I appreciate the intro. So basically, we are looking at a BYOD program, Bring Your Own Device, or a one-to-one program. We've always had a BYOD program here, we have board policies with that. But we want to give parents the opportunity to actually bring their own device if they want to and opt out of this program. Like Matt says, we have about 850 devices that are currently compatible with our district and that can be handed out to students. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to go ahead and share my screen, and I shared this with you just a couple minutes before.
So Dave, while you're sharing that, I just have a question for you. So like, if the Bring Your Own Device program is in place, does that mean that you and Matt would have to support multiple platforms and actually be like a service desk for like Apple, you know, like Windows operating systems, like, you know, tablets, like the whole nine yards? Would you have to like be knowledgeable about that? Or you just would actually have, if you bring your own device, that you're responsible for repairing?
So the nice thing about the school and technology these days is everything is web-based. So as long as devices can meet the minimum specifications, they should be able to run the web apps, no problem. So for the majority, you know, yes, we're going to have to support them with getting their device connected to the internet at school. You know, we know we're going to have to do that. You know, we'll do some basic troubleshooting if they're having issues during the day. But other than that, as long as they have a supported device, whether it's Windows, Mac, Linux, and they can get on the Wi-Fi, they should be able to access all of our resources. So it's going to be very minimal of what we do and.
So is that, is that basically then, would you like put together, and you might already have this already, would you already have like a, like a troubleshooting checklist that you might want to just publish to our website for, you know, for students and parents that might, you know, so it lessens the load of questions that maybe you and Matt will get during the school year, at least at the beginning of the school year? I don't know if you've already done that, or maybe it's something to consider, I'm just throwing it out there.
Yeah, we learned from last year with all the devices that we've handed out that, you know, having FAQ and documents on there definitely does help out. So we are continuing that and we'll make sure it's updated for this school year. Can everybody see the technology programs on my screen?
Yes, I can.
Okay, perfect.
Yes, I can too.
So basically, the first step is we need to ask our parents, which program would you want to participate in? The necessity is there for students to have a device, whether it's their own or a school-issued one, but to have it with them every day. So this would be one or the other program, be a mandatory program. But basically, what we're saying is that, hey, we need your child to have an access to a device anytime they're at school or after school, because our teachers are ultimately going to be teaching with. And we know with COVID going on, it's more important than ever to have their own device. So basically, we have two options here. You can bring your own device. My child will be participating in the BYOD program with their own device. We understand the device must meet the minimum specifications that qualified district, and the maintenance and upkeep of the devices is a family's responsibility. It must be charged and brought to school each day. And so basically, what we did was the minimum specifications, we just went with the air testing requirements, minimum specifications. So if it's good enough for testing, it should be good enough for us with the applications that we use. The biggest component to this BYOD is that we're not going to permit cell phones to be part of this program. And the reason being is, you know, first of all, we want the students engaged in learning. You know, we want the students to be able to actively go through search, use the bigger screen to their potential. And ultimately, the cellphone screen is a little too small for that to happen. So, you know, we put down cell phones are not permitted as a BYOD device. Now, this doesn't mean that they can't use them in the classroom with the teachers and the principals', you know, approval beforehand, but it's not going to count as a BYOD device. So basically, anything that's 10 or 11 inches or bigger would be supported, you know. And then I see on here, we probably should put some specifications as far as operating systems, you know, that are supported.
David, another question, so like, what's sort of like, like the cushion that we have? So like, if, if, if the, I don't know, if a person, I don't know what the, what the surveys would be or how many people would bring their own device versus actually having a, taking advantage of the Chromebooks. But I would imagine that people forget them, people, you know, things break at home and they might run one program to another. Like, what sort of our cushion that we have as a backup, you know, that says that we can make sure that all of our students have them, no matter if they like forget them, or if they, you know, if something breaks at home?
The majority of students we can handle. We put out a survey, not survey, a form to all the families and asked them, you know, do they have internet at home, do they have a device at home? And 21%, or 20, I'm sorry, 26% came back saying that they would want to participate in the one-to-one program. Is that correct, Matt, or am I getting those mixed up? Matt Harmon, do you remember? I can look it up. But basically, we had 660 students fill it out. And, you know, majority of them said that they were going to participate in the program and the BYOD was there. So basically, as of now, we have enough Chromebooks for all of our students, you know, and we have spares available and parts available to fix them. They're not hard to fix, you know, it takes, you know, half an hour or so, but we can get them, get them fixed in no time. So we have the capability to these days to run the program.
So you said 26% would opt into the, getting Chromebooks then, you said?
Yeah, let me, I'm looking up the form right now.
About 100 people? 100 people, okay.
Okay, I do have one comment on the BYOD list.
Okay.
Is a desktop considered a laptop, is the same as a laptop, same category?
A desktop computer?
Yeah, people do still have them, you know.
I know, a desktop would probably not be permitted, because they would have to bring it in to school, use it during class periods as they're teaching.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Let's think about the normal environment without COVID.
Right, I'm thinking of the COVID environment rather than normal.
Yeah, and ultimately, they could use it. But something like that at home would need like a webcam where the teachers can communicate and actually see them back and forth. But they wouldn't be bringing it back and forth to school.
Right, okay, well, that makes sense. I was, I was just isolating on the 100% online situation.
Yeah.
Because, I think that you answered a quick question before, Dave, too, is like, as far as like, does it, does, do we have any sort of exposure to our network based upon the system from outside devices? And I know that, you know, is, can antiviruses be pushed out? I think you would answer this question before to everyone, just to make sure that they're, they're not bringing anything into our own network. But you said everything is web-based though, right? But would anybody get into our internal network, would there be any reason for to do that from home?
That's a great point. So as I said, in every single Technology Committee meeting, we said, focus on the infrastructure. As long as we have a strong infrastructure, we can support whatever we need to support. So basically, what we have now is we have a strong wireless, we got a strong internet connection. NeoNet's actually updating their internet bandwidth to 30 gigabytes download and upload. So right now, we have a 10 gigabit upload and download to them. So internet's not going to be an issue. As far as devices and security and all that, those students that jump on our network are on either the GO, the guest network or the Go Redskins network, which we're going to change the name of it.
Good.
So, so basically, the students will jump on those network, and they don't have access to any of our school resources, physical servers or physical network while on that network. So they're segmented from there, it's a private network where they basically can get on the internet. Now, they also have internet filtering on that while they're at school. So anytime they're on there, they're not going to be able to get to those malicious websites, you know, and all that. So that will help prevent the spread of some type of virus or something like that.
That's really good then, that's good, that's what I want to know about, if there's any risk exposure to us too. And it sounds if it's a separated out, it's partitioned out, I think that that helps us a lot then too as well.
Especially with the Chromebooks these days, you know, it's, the operating system's ran by Google. When you push, they push it out, they push out security updates all the time. I think they're on version 86 now, and they started with version one. So, you know, it's, it's a pretty secure network, it pushes out automatically. And I see a lot of families moving to Chromebooks if they want to do their own BYOD program.
So it sounds as though that, and then this is the other question, I wanted to make sure that you're not adding, like, and it doesn't seem like you would be with this program, anything that's to your and Matt's like workloads that overwhelm you, like with the amount of, you know, problems or issues. It sounds like it's going to be almost like a continuous stream as it was before, except we're just allowing for everyone to have a device, whether it's, you know, in school, out of school, whatever, that they have a device that they can actually utilize for homework or in-class work, or whatever it may be, which is great. And I guess that, you know, I just wondered if there's going to be, if there was, you see any other additional like workload on you and Matt, you know, to take on this, you know?
Yeah. Ultimately, I would be lying if I said there would be no more workload on us, but the reality is there is going to be more workload. But we think the educational opportunities that we can provide to the students, you know, outweighs that extra workload. You know, students can be traveling with these every day, back and forth, you know, from school to home, you know, versus the cart model we currently have, where they just grab from a cart and take it to their seat. So, you know, they're going to be moving more, accidents are going to happen, you know. I'm not going to say, you know, there, some devices are going to be stolen, you know, or missing, or whatever it may be. So, yeah, we're going to have to be dealing with those issues. You know, repairing miscellaneous things, a screen cracked, you know, we got to replace the screen.
Right.
It, it's nothing that we cannot handle here, you know?
Yeah, but even to that, to that, to that point too, is like, if it's a screen crack or anything else like that, it sounds like the Bring Your Own Device would be the responsibility of the individual student or parent then to get that repaired, you know, whereas basically if a Chromebook, I mean, you'd probably help them to try to get back up to speed or provide them with another one of backup while you repair the other one. So it seems like, you know, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, that you have the resources and, you know, the amount of, you know, work to do it. Is it, I don't know if it's exponentially a lot more, or if it's just minimal, you know what I mean? So like, is it going to be that, and I guess you usually have to gauge it to see what, what it's going to be like right off the beginning. But I mean, I guess preliminarily, I don't know if it's going to be that incrementally a lot larger of a workload for you though.
Yeah, and what would be nice is that, you know, all the kids are pretty much going to have devices that we know, we know how to support and we know how to fix them. You know, the whole COVID thing throws us in a loop where, you know, we want to make sure we have equity to devices. And we feel this is one way of providing those to the, to the students. And we think this program will work out for the district. You know, with the whole COVID thing, you know, all of our students would have help, access to our Help Desk program. So if they have problems, they can submit a ticket, you know, it's all going to be tracked through that, that system as far as inventory. So at any time, we know which Chromebook the student has and all that. And then, you know, if something breaks, we give them a loaner Chromebook until we can get that one fixed. We assess them based upon the charge of the device, which we'll go through in the, in this handbook program. And then, you know, just get them back up and running, you know. The necessity is there to have a device at all times, and we want to make sure we promote that with the kids.
So just to go back to like your, the way that we're going to account for the fixed asset then, so that that's going to be recorded in like your Help Desk system? It's like, we have a, if you get, this serial number is given to this student or this family, gets recorded as a service desk ticket. And then, at any point in time, can you actually just give an inventory listing of who has the device and what the serial numbers are?
Yep, at any time. And the other nice thing is that we have a whole admin console on the backend that manages Chromebooks. So each time we buy a Chromebook, we buy a license to manage it. So at any time when someone logs in, we can see a log of, hey, this person logged in at this time. You know, and so we know actively who's logging in, who's using what. And we give remote disabled devices, we can, there's a whole bunch we can do, but that all integrates with our Help Desk program also. So that's just another extra layer of information that we have.
Okay, that's great.
So. So basically, what we did was we created this one-to-one program. You know, a lot of schools are doing this already, I've talked to a lot of schools that have been doing it and got some ideas from them. But basically, you know, it's providing a device to everybody in the district, so they have access anywhere, anytime. So this program would basically be for all students in grades pre-K through 12. They would get a, get a Chromebook to use, basically this year would be a Chromebook and a charger. For next school year, when we actually roll out the program, an additional cost would be cases for all the Chromebooks. At this point, we don't have any cases and we're not going to be able to get them in on time. So it would be a pre-K through 12 program and receive a Chromebook and charging cable, and they can travel with these Chromebooks, use them to and from school. And anytime, feel free to interrupt and ask a question. So basically, Chromebooks will be distributed during English technology class or technology classes at the elementary. This year, it's going to be a little different with COVID. We basically scheduled it three days, the 26th, 27th, and 28th of this week, which will be, of this month, which will be communicated to the parents. So three, three, three days of handing out Chromebooks and textbooks and all that with that. But basically, how we roll this out, since this is a pre-K through 12 program, is that students in grades, first grade, fifth grade, and ninth grade will receive the newest Chromebook, the newest model that we have. And the idea behind this is they will keep it for four years and just continue rolling over. So first year, they use it, they keep it over the summer, they use it. If they need repair or maintenance undone, they can turn that into us. But they use it for four years. After those four years, we get the Chromebooks back and they have approximately two to three years left of life in them. Those Chromebooks would then go down to the pre-K and kindergarten students. We know that they're much younger than everyone else, not as responsible, or they just don't know. So we're going to give them the older Chromebooks that, you know, if something breaks, we're not going to lose sleep over. So basically, grades 1, 5, and 9 will receive those, the newest ones, and then so on, so forth, down the other grades will receive the older ones. So each year, you know, grades 1, 5, and 9 will receive a new Chromebook. After four years, it'll go down pre-K and K. And then, basically, in high school, after your four years, we're going to give the option to buy out the Chromebook at a depreciated cost. So we think to be prepared for college and career readiness, you need to have a device right as you go into college. And if these Chromebooks have useful life up to seven years and you only use it for four, you know, you can, this can be used to get you started in college. You already know how to use it, you've been experienced with it your whole career, you can just run with it. So we thought that was a good program for that. You know, in grades 1 and 5, you know, once they graduate from fourth grade, go to fifth grade, you know, they're turning their device and, and will give down to pre-K and kindergarten for the next school year. So that's sort of the plan with that. The other nice thing about the Chromebook program is if we have a surplus of Chromebooks after those four years, there are many companies that will buy them back from us, because they still have useful life left. So we will get some money back on that behalf to, to use them. Right now, we're having issues selling our older Chromebooks, because they have no useful life. You know, they're not supported by Google anymore, so it's basically just hardware. But if there are a couple of years left, we can get at least some money back and people will be interested in purchasing them. We will not make it available to purchase to anybody that's not graduating from high school. We don't want to get it all mixed up where, you know, we sell a fifth grader a Chromebook and then after three years it stops working. And then, well, I bought this Chromebook and it doesn't work, I, you know, it's just a whole mess. That's why we figured after they graduate, we will sell them the Chromebook.
Dave, I have a question for you. So, so as far as like, I'm just going back to the asset tracking and actually that you have inside of your, your service desk, and that's how you would track them all. Though, is there like, is there like a, do they, I don't know, once they actually have, like in the fifth grade, if they get, they get issued a Chromebook, would they then continue it on with their whole career with, with, you know, basically those four years with, with having that Chromebook? Or is there, because how about if a student actually has a Chromebook and leaves our school? At that one time, how's the asset returned back to the school if we're not checking them in annually?
Yeah, so basically, down in this document, it says if a student leaves school, you know, transfers out, whatever it may be, they must turn in the device before they leave, or we will not release their report cards to the other school. Or we'll assess them for a missing device. Yeah, so, yeah, definitely, they have to turn them in before they, they leave.
I see, okay. So we're actually going to let them have them, so like, they'll have them like over the summer and then they'll have them their whole basically career at that heights up until the time that their useful life is over, which is four years, or basically graduate.
Correct.
Okay, and then, so the, and then we'll just, we'll just get them back though. And if a person, I guess their only risk would be is that if a student actually then leaves, leaves heights, then, you know, would, would actually take the computer. But again, if we're going to hold our, the grades and those types of things, or assess basically the parent for the cost of the, the Chromebook, I think that that's appropriate.
Yeah, and we work great with the Treasurer's Office and the Guidance Office. You know, we're always notified when someone leaves, because we got to deactivate their accounts anyway, you know. So we're good about communicating with them.
Beautiful.
So each family will be required to sign an agreement saying that, you know, actually through final forms, you're going to follow the acceptable use, you're going to follow the guidelines in this, in this document, and you're responsible for any repairs or costs, you know, whether it's accidental or incidental. Okay. So repair fees, this is just a proposed cost list. Basically, we're saying if you lose your Chromebook and a bag and your charger, it's going to be a $250 replacement. Replacement screen is $75. Your charger, if your dog chews on it, you know, it's going to be a $30 charge. Keyboard or touchpad, another $30 charge. And then eventually, when we get the carrying cases, we'll charge them for that if something happens. Now, there's other things that may happen to it, you know, there may be a big scratch on the, on the case or, you know, some other component goes bad in which we need to charge them. I didn't list them all out, but it's a minimal cost to, to get those.
Dave, would we allow, we allow students or parents to replace the, the, whatever's, you know, got damaged, like a, an adapter or that by themselves? Or actually, you want everything to be corded through you, so it's basically standard equipment?
Yeah, so basically, we're telling them, do not do any repairs to your device yourself. You know, if something needs to be fixed, we will fix it for you. We can get parts at a cheaper cost than you would as a consumer. Just let us do it, you know, we know how to take it apart and fix it.
And I agree with that strategy, because I don't think that you want like, you know, sub, you know, optimal type of, type of parts or basically, you know, put, or adapters putting into a computer, because obviously, they work differently each, each.
Right, well, you have to make sure everything matches up and.
Quality is better, yep.
Yeah, yeah, and a lot of companies offer, you know, remanufactured parts that are not up to, you know, the specs that we want.
Absolutely.
So it's, you know, like for the newer Chromebooks, yeah, we're going to get OEM parts. But for the older ones, yeah, remanufactured, it's fine, because it only has a year or two left. So, you know, we'll make that determination at the time of the repair.
Makes sense, yep.
Does everything look okay as far as fee structure?
Yeah, I mean, it looks, it looks reasonable. I mean, those are, those are, those are prices that I would, you know, basically, would likely to see. Sure, and actually, it's probably cheaper.
Yeah, yeah. We didn't put our labor rates in, but we can't charge.
Exactly. That's where my mind is going, but I.
Yeah, so, so basically, with this whole program, we need to lay out the responsibilities for the students. You know, pre-K through 12, they're required to bring them each day, fully charged. You know, it's going to be a change for all the students. You know, if you forget it, you know, you may not be able to participate for the day. You know, if it's broken, we're going to repair it. You know, repeated offense, offenses where they forget to bring them, you know, we'll handle like we do with any discipline situation, just send it to the principal. And, you know, this is important for your education, you need to have it each day. Again, making sure it's fully charged. One thing that we're going to do is, since we do have some older Chromebooks, we're going to provide some secured or unsecured locations where they can put their Chromebooks in and charge them. Right now, it doesn't mean anything because of COVID, but, you know, we're going to set a spot in the cafeteria where we're going to have chargers available, they can just plug them in and charge their Chromebooks. You know, in a classroom, you know, we'll make sure a kid can sit by a charger or outlet if he needs to charge his Chromebook. You know, we're not going to deny them that opportunity. But the students will ultimately can be responsible for, for their devices. You know, if it's a repeated thing, again, it'll be some type of discipline issue.
Hey, Dave, what's, what's the battery life on the, on the Chromebooks? Just, just a guess, is it like four hours?
Um.
I'm just curious, because like, when we run into a problem, if, if, if teachers are using them consistently throughout the day, that might be whatever, you know, what, six, seven hours?
Yeah.
If they're continuously on, would that, would that cause a problem, like, down the line for charging?
I just looked up our newest models, they say about nine to 10 hours.
So you're, you're good, yeah, that's no problem at all. If they haven't fully charged, then maybe that's what should be added on here, that we expect basically those Chromebooks to be fully charged when they go, when they start the school day, like, you know, from home.
Yeah, and there's ways of extending the power life by, you know, closing it when it's not in use, of going low sleep mode or turning your brightness down on your screen, you know. So there's ways of doing that, and we can put those, those in there too. You know, follow all faculty and staff directives. Must remain free of inappropriate writing, drawing, and stickers, you know, normal classroom rules. See. So any activity they do is going to be monitored, just like they do while they're on school computers. They must secure it when they're done working, protect their work and Chromebook. If they receive any inappropriate content on there, they need to notify an adult as soon as possible, so we can investigate that. Here's the, the whole thing about transferring and being expelled or terminating enrollment. You know, they must return their Chromebook prior. Protecting their passwords, bringing their charged Chromebook every day. Giving credit, you know, plagiarism policy or copyright policy. Let's see, students will not take video or record sound with their Chromebook when it's part of a class or a lesson. Basically, we'll go by our board policies for that. You know, if there's an expectation of privacy, you know, you are not to, to record that. And then basically, you're not allowed to use your Chromebooks in bathrooms, locker rooms, nurse's office, or any place with a, with an expectation of privacy. You know, all the Chromebooks do have webcams on them, so that's something that we will have to bring up. Reporting Chromebook issues, basically, like I said before, anytime there's an issue, they put a support. Reporting Chromebook issues, basically, like I said before, anytime there's an issue, they put a support ticket in through our system. Um, they'll bring the Chromebook to us, we will go through and, and fix it, let them know if there's any costs to fix it. And then, uh, basically swap out their loaner with a, their, uh, Chromebook again. Um, so it's, it's a pretty simple repair process, we're not trying to make it complicated. Um, if the Chromebook is lost or stolen, they have to report it neatly. So we can disable the devices and when we do that, it says, hey, this Chromebook is locked, please return it to our school address or give us a call at this number. It, it basically makes it, the Chromebook's unusable by anybody. If they try to get past it, it just re-enrolls in our system and, 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 uh, it's still not usable. Um, if a device is lost or stolen, we're gonna require a, a police report with that. Just, just a way to track it. At that point, we can give information to the police and they can track things online. Um, they'll, a whole system that, um, for technology. And then, you know, we'll still issue them a loaner Chromebook. Chromebook care line guidelines, you know, no food or drink by the device. You know, be careful while inserting cords and everything, don't close it on your pencil, you know, that's how a screen's cracked. You know, just basically, just give them examples to actively think about in their mind when they're using it. And now, we're gonna have the teachers really push, um, some of these, uh, these, uh, guidelines. Um, you know, don't get it wet, never lift it or carry by the screen. You know, be careful while it's in your bookbag. And this brings up a good point, I don't know, Matt, uh, Young, if you wanna touch on this or not, um, but our, our textbooks. He might have stepped away. But basically, um, you know, all of our textbooks nowadays, when we purchase a textbook, we're buying a book version and we're buying the online version. So a lot of these, if a kid has a, a Chromebook in front of them all days, they're not gonna need to be carrying their textbooks with them, which will cause, um, you know, could cause damage to the Chromebook. So, um, basically, you know, they have access to the books and, and the Chromebooks at the same time. Um, and then just keep it in a secure location, making sure it's locked up, don't leave in your car.
Dave, I just wanted to follow up, Matt just stepped out to, um, see my Triska off, so he should be back up any minute.
No worries, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, Dave, just one other question too, so like, with, um, I know this goes back to the fixed asset question, but, um, so the loaner program, like, so if, I would imagine that students are gonna forget their, they forget their Chromebooks and stuff like that, especially in the, at the beginning of school year and everything like that. So I'd imagine that you're gonna have to have like probably 20, 25, 50 of them, like charged up and ready to go. Is the, is the tracking of those loners happen the same way as, as the, um, the regular devices? Are you gonna like log a ticket so that they're accountable for those too, and then you'll be able to track them back as well?
Yes, that's, that's completely correct. What we're gonna do, yeah, it's, once we loan something out, it's gonna be assigned to that student. We're gonna see they have two devices and then, you know, there'll be a ticket accompanying that to, you know.
Then when they return the loaner, basically then that ticket gets closed out, is that how it works? Okay, gotcha, perfect, thanks.
Um, so basically, we talked about saving work on your Chromebook, you know, we have unlimited space on Google Drive, you know, let's, let's have them use it. Um, network connectivity, it'll be, it will be connected to our, our CHS students' network. Um, and then, you know, of course, for, for the BYOD, they can connect to our other, um, other networks. Um, we would like to have inspection every so often with our Chromebooks. We just wanna make sure everything's being treated properly, you know, everything's, um, you know, being used appropriately. Again, in our acceptable use, you know, students have no right to privacy here. You know, anything they do is monitored by the school, we can review that at, at any time. It's really no change, um, but they, they have to know that it's still a, a school-issued Chromebook, a district-issued, um, and, and it belongs to the school. So we'll just check it out every so often, um, and go from there. But that's basically the, the, uh, Chromebook program. Is there any other questions I can answer regarding that?
So, so Matt, just to confirm, um, I'm sorry, Dave, just to confirm, so that we have, um, so they're, they're, when they do internet searches, um, at home or whatever, it's not that they can bring in any sort of viruses that way? Cause like, if they're doing research for like a, a term paper or something like that, like they could be clicking on links that would be bringing it in. So like, how, how is that getting to, to, to be stopped then from, from our, um, perspective? Or, or they're not just not gonna be able to use those for research and those types of things?
For the BYOD or for the Chromebooks?
Well, I guess they're for the Chromebooks, I, you know, I, I would guess, because I would imagine the, the BYOD actually has, is open everywhere probably, depends on the, the parent restrictions. But how about for the, the Chromebooks?
Yeah, so, so the, the Chromebook operating system is pretty secure. Like I said before, you know, Google releases security updates all the time. It's not easy for them to download a virus onto the, the Chromebook, because there's only certain locations that you can store files without, you know, actually going in and modifying the code. Basically, what we're, we're planning on doing is that we, we securely, securely here in our school district for internet filtering. And, um, not get too technical, but it's a DNS-based filtering, which basically means that, uh, we can enable it for them to log in anywhere and still get the same filtering. Um, so that's one thing we were gonna, uh, promote for, with this program, is turning that on. So when they're at home, they still have that same filtered internet that, if they would have at school.
So that, that filtering is just like keywords, basically then, that they cannot search for?
Basically, it, it does it by different categories. So if you look at, um, uh, the, the biggest category is self-harm. Uh, so if, if a kid types in something, you know, unfortunately, how do I do this to myself? You know, basically it triggers alert in our system and notifies us that, hey, something has happened or someone's searching for something, gives us that heads up. You know, of course, with pornography, adult content, all that, that, all that is logged through the system in different categories. And they go through, this company goes through websites every day and categorizes them in different orders. But then there's also, um, you know, random search engines, um, random sites online that, um, go nowhere, maybe malicious. You know, they categorize all those for us. Not saying that something's not gonna skip through, but, you know, each day, you know, we, we can actually see what the students are searching for and making sure they have, uh, safe and secure internet.
But it would automatically block them, right? If they, if they look at something for self-harm or whatever it may be, it would automatically, like, not even, it would just say, you know, the site's blocked or would be able to be accessed or whatever, right?
Correct, yeah. And, and for any website they go to that they think is, uh, blocked for, um, the wrong reason, there's a way for them to submit a ticket right then and there and say, hey, I believe this website should be blocked because of so-and-so. And then we can review over it and override it. And that, that's ultimately what we've been doing, you know, with all of the, the websites we do here.
And you use like, you use like a third party to, to, for this service for internet blocking to give you like updated, like, um, like, I guess, um, you know, listings or whatever? They automatically just like have the blocking set up for you then?
Yeah, so, so basically, as part of our internet service, it's all provided through Neonet. Um, so they provide the internet filtering, so it's very basic of what we have to do. Uh, we have to look at content every so often and see if, you know, allow something in that was blocked and, um, for some reason. Or, you know, block another website that people shouldn't be going to. So it's, it's very rarely that we jump in there, but the whole alerting piece is important for us because it lets us know if something's gonna happen or if a student's thinking about something where we can intervene and, and get the counselors involved. Self-harm's the, the, the biggest one is because we can't turn off those alerts. Those alerts are on automatically. They have a whole monitoring service where if they believe there's some type of self-harm or a kid's thinking about doing something, it will start calling numbers at the school to investigate and, and get that going. So, um, I, I think that's important to have on at home, uh, for the students. And it also gives parents a peace of mind, you know, hey, they, you know, a kid didn't have a device before, but now they do. And, but they're still gonna be filtered and, and all that, so.
That's great, okay, yeah, that, that's good to hear, so yeah, absolutely, that's great.
Yeah. Any thoughts or comments about the, the program?
Actually, I, 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 I like the program. I think it's, it's basically what, um, uh, what Mr. Young said at the beginning was that, you know, I think this is obviously that, and, and what you just said too is, as well, um, you know, I think that, that obviously using the Chromebooks and throughout their career and having them ac- accessible and actually taking them into like, you know, if they go to college or otherwise, it's gonna, they're gonna be used, whether they're in a career or basically in college. And I think it's, it, it's a program that actually, I, I, I'm, 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 I'm basically, I'm, I'm stand by that too. I'm behind you guys, I think it's a great program. I, I appreciate all the work that you put into it, to you and, and Matt Hartman and actually on Mr. Young too as well and everybody. Um, I guess I think it's a good program for everybody.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Yep.
Yeah, thanks for me as well.
Yeah, and so a- as far as, uh, replacement cycles for the, for the Chromebooks, um, like I said, we have about 850 devices in the district now. Each Chromebook has an auto expiration date assigned to them. So each model that gets released, um, or it, it's complicated to explain, but basically the hardware inside determines the expiration date. So once it meets that expiration date, whether it's six years or seven years, the Chromebook doesn't receive security updates anymore and ultimately comes useless. So basically, you know, we've been doing this Chromebook program for probably four or five years now. And we're starting to see that roll over with our Chromebooks. Um, so we know that next school year, the summer of, uh, 21, that we need to replace a little bit over 400 Chromebooks. Um, it's basically the, the start of our Chromebook program where we bought all these Chromebooks and now we have to replace all those. And all these costs are already built into the five-year forecast, um, over the five years. We just have to sort of move the money around to which years we're gonna purchase. But ultimately, um, you know, at, we're gonna be purchasing, you know, for first graders, for fifth graders, and for ninth graders each year. You know, basically 180 Chromebooks a year, once we get on a good replacement cycle. Um, so it'll be a minimal cost to keep this program continuing. Like I said before, the only other cost that's involved is, is purchasing bags and, you know, providing the supplies to, to actually repair, uh, the, the Chromebooks. Which brings up another question, you know, we, we've always participated in the Chromebook cart program in which we have all these Chromebook carts. Well, we're gonna keep some of them if we can go with this program, but we're also gonna put those other ones up on, on public auction, so we can recoup some of that money back for the program. This, the Chromebook cart program wasn't broken. You know, it worked out great with our students. But we feel that moving to a one-on-one program will take us to the next level and provide that equity to, to all the students. So minimal cost to, to keep the program going, it's already built in, um, and they're real easy to manage. So, um, as far as support and all that, it's not gonna cost us much.
Yeah, and, and the only thing I would, I would ask is this, this like, like, you know, keep us updated with like some, you know, some concerns or some problems that we didn't expect or anticipate that are coming up. You know, like in, just in some of the board meetings, if you, you know, if you see some things and basically, you know, like, let us know, like that, you know, hey, I didn't, we didn't anticipate this. You know, they, maybe like the, the damage rates are coming in a lot higher than we'd expected, like those sort of things where we maybe have to replace a lot more than what we anticipated, like those type of things and how it's, how it's working out. Just like the back after a little while, if you get it moving and, and see how it's going. And that, I think that would be a, a good kind of like status would be great.
Great. So, so the next steps for this program is we're, we're going to list out, um, basically this, this form on our, uh, final forms. And we're gonna ask all parents to choose an option, whether they're gonna provide a device or be part of the program. Once they say they're part of the program, um, we're working on the, uh, procedure to deploy all the devices on the 26th through the 28th of this month. And then basically, we'll hit the ground running. You know, it's, uh, it's, it's exciting, you know, we'll use this as a, a phase-in year, see how the program works, and then make modifications for, for the next school year when we're actually back in, in classes and back in session. So, you know, it's a weird year due to COVID, but, um, you know, we're, we're definitely learning a lot and, um, and there's a lot going on, so it's, it's, it's a good program, I'm, I'm very excited about this, so.
I, I agree, it is a good pro- program, I'd like to fully support it, it's great.
Matt Young, is there anything else you would like to add?
I just wanna thank, um, Dave and his team for taking the time to, um, research this, taking the time to thoughtfully collaborate with others, uh, taking all the equipment and inventorying everything and, and coming up with this program. Um, it takes some school districts two, three years to do what, what Dave and his team were able to put together here in a very short period of time, which again, tells you about the proactive nature of the program, uh, but also the leadership of Dave. He, he just did a great job leading this initiative, so I just wanna thank him for that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, like I said before, I mean, this is, this is great, and I, I'd echo those comments, uh, from Matt Young too as well. I mean, I think it's a great program, you guys are always on top of things, cutting edge, you know, and i- it's great to, to be, um, I, I guess that you always have answers to all the questions I ask even about security and everything else under the sun, so thank you very much, I appreciate it.
It's all about what's best for kids, so.
Hundred percent it is, absolutely.
Does the, uh, technology committee have any other, uh, topics for today that you would like to bring up or?
Not that, not this time, I, I think I'm, I, I think, like I said, I think, this is, this is a great program and like I said, I think I don't have any other questions at this point in time.
The same here, I have no additional questions.
Okay, perfect. Well, thank you all for jumping on, I know this was, uh, short notice, um, but I'm glad we were able to do this and at least bring this to the committee because it's, uh, it's an important part of our, our district now and, and to move forward with this. So, uh, I appreciate all your time and, uh, if there's nothing else, we're gonna adjourn the meeting at 11:48.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
Right, thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Have a good afternoon, good evening.
You too.
Bye.